All right, calling the order to common councillor of the city of Gladstone on April 14th, 2015. It is now 6:31 PM. Jolene, can you do the roll, please?
Uh, councillor Nelson.
Here.
Councillor Mercer.
Here.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Sickman.
Here.
Councillor McMahon.
Here.
Councillor Reisner.
Here.
Mayor Jacob Ellis.
Here. Please join in, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hey, um, just want to welcome everybody here tonight. Uh, one of the things that we've been doing is filling out these cards, so if you want to, um, talk at the podium, we're gonna need to fill out the card. There'll be a three-minute time limit. Uh, the cards will be handed to, uh, Jolene Morrissey, the Assistant City Manager, and she'll call your name, come up to the podium, and then state your business. So if you haven't filled out a card, please fill out a card. Um, but... Over by the podium, right by the door, there's cards there. Little three-by-five or five-by-seven. Well, we'll give them time to fill out the cards. If I do business from the audience, they're probably not here yet. All right, uh, we're gonna start with any business from the audience. This is the time now, if you fill out a card. Jolene, you have any cards? No cards? No business from the audience? All right.
So when do we turn the cards in? I guess I didn't...
You can turn the cards in, uh, turn the cards in now, and if you don't have anything, like, on an agenda item, then you can just talk now. If you have something you want to talk about on an agenda item, wait for the agenda item to come up, and then we'll call your name.
Thank you.
Now you've got a card. Feel better.
Okay, so now we're gonna tackle the consent agenda. There's, uh, five items on it. I'll read them off, and if we want to pull any of them off, that's fine. Uh, first one's approval of the February 24th, 2015 minutes. Second item is the approval of the project list. The third item is the approval of the fiscal year FY 2016 budget calendar. And number four is appointment to Park and Recreation Board, uh, Stephen Dorner. And number five is the payment of March claims. So...
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
I would like to pull number five.
Number five, okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Second, the motion to approve items one through four.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve items one through four on the consent agenda by Len Nelson, and a second by councillor Sickman to approve item one through four. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we're gonna take item number five and discuss it. Is that correct? All right.
Well, I have, uh, one item. It's on, in the back. There, there... These pages aren't numbered like the other sections, so it'd be the last section, number page 10, which is about the third or fourth page from the end. Oregon Accreditation Alliance, I'd like to pull for further consideration.
Right, and Mr. Mayor and councillor Reisner, I had a communication from Jeff Jolly, uh, the interim chief today, who wanted to pull the item, the check also, so there can be some discussion about whether or not we continue with that or not. So, yeah, staff's in favor of pulling that claim also.
And other than that, I appreciate, uh, the timely response to the questions that I had on, on this item. I don't know if there was any other comments. If not, then I would, uh, uh, make a motion to approve item five, payment of claims, uh, with the exception of, uh, your, uh, what was it? Oregon Accreditation Alliance.
Second. So I have a motion by councillor Reiser to approve item number five, seconded by the visit high. I'll give it to councillor Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so item number five has been included, or approved for the consent agenda. Down to correspondence. Uh, this month, we have no correspondence. We are now going to move down to the regular agenda items. Uh, we are going to move item number six to public hearing on the co-locate the wireless community antenna. We're gonna move that down, um, on the agenda items, and we are now going to take item number seven, which is the presentation by West Coast Infrastructure.
Mayor Jacob Ellis.
Yes, sir.
Would you maybe explain to the audience why we're moving that one?
Uh, the, the reason why it's being moved, uh, we're hoping because of the, there was a lack of communication between the county and us on our start, new start time, so they put it on the heading as a 7:30 time for the, uh, appeal, and since we're only at 6:35, we wouldn't meet that requirement. So there was an issue, so we're gonna try to move it back and get it close to 7:30. So, that's why we moved it.
Well said.
So, West Coast Infrastructure, mister, please announce who you are and...
Hi, everybody here, you okay? Hi, so I'm Jonathan Trent. I'm the program manager at the West Coast Infrastructure Exchange. I understand I have about 20 minutes tonight, so I'm gonna do a quick presentation about who we are, what we work on, and then, uh, hopefully leave enough time for questions and answers, because that's the reason we exist. So, um, next slide, please. So, uh, what is the West Coast Infrastructure Exchange? We are a collaboration among Oregon, Washington, California, and British Columbia. Uh, we're a 501(c)(3) now-for-profit organization, and we were created by the governors and the treasurers of the three west coast states, and then the premier of British Columbia, to start dealing with the US west coast infrastructure gaps. Uh, the, it's clear to everybody that we have a lag in infrastructure investment, and the reason that we're collaborating with Canada is we have a lot to learn from them. Um, in British Columbia, they've had a very effective track record of using the private sector to help with public infrastructure investment. And so it was the governors of the three states, along with the treasurers, that decided to create our organization, set it up as a now-for-profit, and include British Columbia as an advisor to our board, so that we can learn from what they've done with public-private partnerships, and start dealing with our infrastructure needs. Um, you can look on the next slide. So in terms of our guiding principles, um, we exist to help the public sector analyze as it's thinking about its infrastructure needs, whether public-private partnerships, um, are suitable, and are gonna offer the best value to the public, to the taxpayer, to the ratepayer. So there's some guiding principles that, that we live by. So first and foremost, assets stay in public ownership. So this is not a privatization scheme. Public-private partnership can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, so we're clearly talking about assets remain publicly owned. Um, these are prevailing wage jobs. This is not in any way an attempt to try to get out of paying prevailing wage on construction work. Uh, and I think this is a key thing that we've learned from, not just Canada, but from around the world, that public-private partnerships are one way to start thinking and analyzing projects based on their full lifecycle costs. So what is it gonna cost not just to build it, but what is it gonna cost to operate and maintain it over the course of its useful life? Um, and again, a guiding principle is that what we really want is to be making smart infrastructure investments. Um, the smartest way to go about doing infrastructure, depending on the project, you have to analyze it, can be a traditional design, bid, build approach. That's what they find in British Columbia when they analyze projects. They say, you know, the best value for the public is probably on 80% of these projects. Do things the traditional way. You design a project, put it out for bid, take the lowest-cost bid. Private sector's not involved in operations or maintenance or in finance. And then for the other 20%, for the projects that are really complicated, for the projects where there's an opportunity to have the private sector pick up a lot of the risk associated with design, with construction, and O&amp;M costs, those are the ones that may work best as public-private partnerships. Um, and I have to say, uh, last guiding principle is that we're free. Um, we're free because we were created by the three states to be of use to the public sector as it analyzes its options, and we're here to be an honest broker of information. We're not promoting public-private partnerships, per se. My compensation, our executive director's compensation, has nothing to do with how a particular project is procured. But it's really just to help towns, regions, states, start dealing with their infrastructure in a way that's most efficient. Next slide, please. Okay, so here, we're, we're into some visuals. So this is, um, the, let's say, uh, can you back up two slides? There you go, great. So this is traditionally how we procure infrastructure, um, in the US, and, uh, you could call it design, bid, build. A lot of people do. And the, the idea is the blue, uh, here, I can stand here, and so it'll be a lot easier. Uh, the blue represents, uh, public sector participation, and you can see that in a traditional project, I'm telling you things you know. The public sector, they, they program the plan, they manage the project, they finance, they own the, the building and the land, and the only involvement of the private sector is in the design process. You pick a, say, consulting engineering firm, and then, of course, you put the project out to bid. So that's how we generally do things. Um, in the public-private partnership, or sometimes people call it the performance-based procurement method.
Next slide, please.
Public still owns the building, uh, public still owns the land. Uh, the public still sets the program, it still tells the private sector, this is what we want. This is our concept. These are the performance specifications that this asset has to live up to. But the private sector is involved in, it can be a combination of the different green boxes: design, build, finance, um, operate, and maintain. And the, the, this model, when it, when it is appropriate, the nice thing that it does is it aligns the operations and the maintenance with the design and the build part. Um, in traditional procurement, if the project doesn't perform the way it was represented during the design phase, or during the construction phase, either because of design defects, construction defects, for whatever reasons, um, that it costs more to run than you had initially expected, the taxpayer picks that up. In the public-private partnership, or performance-based procurement model, you on the front end know, you make an agreement with the private sector on what the O&amp;M costs are gonna be, and, um, they have to, they have to live by that. And if it costs more, they, they eat that, and it doesn't fall back on, on us as taxpayers. So there's a, there's a representation of this in the next two slides. Um, next slide, please. So, think about that, that first, if you can, that first visual, design, bid, build. Um, the blue bars represent your budgeted costs over the course of, say, 35 years, where you have roughly four to five-year design and construction phase, and then a 30-year operations phase. So, so the way we traditionally do things, um, is blue represents what you know it's gonna cost, and red represents what it might cost in addition to that, due to cost over ends during the design and construction phase, um, cost over ends during operations, and, um, at the end of, say, a 30-year, 30 years is an arbitrary number. We picked it as, many assets have a 30-year, um, useful life. At the, at the end of, say, an initial useful lifecycle, um, there can be a lot of deferred maintenance to deal with. The performance-based model, next slide, please, um, really completely changes the dynamics. So, so in the performance-based infrastructure model, what happens is the public sector does a little bit of a redesign, like, to figure out what its concept is and what it wants to achieve. And then, that's it. It puts it out to the private sector to say, "Come to us with your best ideas, both in terms of design and in terms of your costs." And so the private sector is then on the hook for paying all those design and construction costs, and the public sector doesn't start making payments on the project until it's done. You could call that a turnkey model. Um, not until it's done and accepted does the public start making payments. Now, those payments during the operations phase, what are they? They're a series of payments to cover, um, operations and maintenance and financing costs. And those payments are scheduled. It's much like a mortgage, though it's indexed for inflation, and on the front end, you know what it's, what you're going to be paying as government. Um, if it costs more to run than that, then the private sector is on the hook for that. Your costs are known. Um, and the other thing is that these, these performance-based infrastructure models always have at the very beginning a, a turnback provision. So the private sector will have, say, a 30-year operations and maintenance contract, and at the end of that, they have to turn the facility back in a condition that is as good as new. So it's been through a, a long cycle at least of major, um, recapitalization. Next slide, please. So, there's this question, I, I, I immediately this, that it's not every project that makes sense as a performance-based infrastructure project or a public-private partnership. Um, so, so when does that make sense? And that's especially true when you think about financing costs, because I, forgive me, I don't know what the city's credit rating is, but tax-free debt is usually a really good bargain, and it's gonna be less expensive than the financing costs associated with private sector financing. So, um, the scenario in which there's additional value, additional benefit to the public, is, is one in which you look at not just the construction and operating costs and the project management costs, but you think about risks. Um, the performance-based infrastructure model really shifts the risk of cost over and, over to the private sector. And it's a case-by-case analysis, because if the private sector in a, in a performance-based model is financing the project in addition to doing the design, the build, and then maintaining, the financing costs are gonna be higher than if you issue tax-exempt debt and have the public finance it. The question is, what risks are you able to push onto the private sector in conjunction with the performance-based model? It's that red bar. So in the traditional design, bid, build model, you have a lot of risk that you retain, um, change orders, O&amp;M costs that are higher than, than, you know, than you initially expected based on the design. In the performance-based model, so much of that is picked up by the private sector, that it can more than outweigh the higher financing costs. And it, it really depends on the project, and it's a case-by-case analysis. I, I can't make grand sweeping, um, generalizations about it. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a case study. I, I imagine this is a just complete deluge, so I, I wanna stress that, uh, we're freely available. I'm gonna need some packages, Jolene. I encourage you to ask me questions now and then follow-up questions. But this is a courthouse in Long Beach, California, that was just recently completed, and, um, it was done as a performance-based infrastructure project. Um, next slide, please. All the pictures on the side are pictures of the new courthouse. Um, so, some, some key facts about it, please forgive the jargon. Um, it was a design, build, finance, operate, maintain project. So the private sector picked up all of those pieces, and it was, you could call it a "but-for" project, in that this is a state courthouse that previously had been completely dilapidated, um, or just a real, real hazard, and, um, the way the California Office of the Courts budget works, it couldn't finance any more projects. The only way this project was gonna get done is if it was privately financed. And so that was one of the reasons they became very interested in this model, to replace this dilapidated courthouse. Um, the private sector, they call it a concessionaire, but the, the private sector team that won the RFP to go ahead with the, the project, um, also signed a 30-year operations and maintenance contract, and it's a very detailed contract about, um, every last detail about the, the courthouse, and how many days out of the year, how many hours out of the year the elevators can be down for maintenance, and, um, how many hours a year the, the AV system has to be completely functional. And to the extent the private sector is unable to, to conform with those performance benchmarks, the public sector's payments, if you can think about those little stacked bars from a few slides ago, um, they get a credit. They get a deduction, because the building wasn't available in the condition that it was promised. Um, this is an availability payment structure, and, um, again, forgive the jargon. In English, what that means is that, is that the, the public sector's dollars that are, that are paying during the O&amp;M phase are really general revenue dollars. Um, a lot of people, understandably, when they hear about public-private partnerships, they think about revenue generating projects, and that is one model, like a toll road, where the private sector accepts the risks of whatever the tolls are gonna be, and goes ahead and takes that revenue source to obtain the financing necessary and go forward with the project. Um, a courthouse obviously doesn't generate that kind of revenue stream, and so the payments are made, um, based on the availability of the courthouse, according to performance specifications, um, at a general obligation dollars. And last but not least, um, they got this done really quickly. There's a, next slide, please. So they selected their preferred bidders. They threw an RFQ process in May 2009. You can see all the dates. They got, they got, um, the proposals all backed by the end of that year. They selected a partner by June 2010. They broke ground less than a year later, and then they opened the building roughly two years after, um, they broke ground on it. And then it's the last slide. This may be hard to see. I'll send this to you guys. But, um, this was a comparison that the state did of two courthouses built at around the same time, um, under very different models. Um, the Long Beach courthouse, which you just saw, is the one on the left. It's the performance-based infrastructure model. Um, and a similarly sized project, a little bit, I guess, more coordinates, fewer, fewer square feet, was, was done at the same time through traditional design, bid, build. Um, what they found was that if you look at the construction, the project schedule, the Long Beach courthouse was delivered roughly two years earlier than, than the other project. So it was a faster, uh, construction schedule. The hard costs were about the same, and they don't really have information back on the operating costs, because they're both recently opened. But the, again, risk allocation, if you go up there from the bottom, um, with the Long Beach courthouse, they were able to push a lot of the risks associated with the project design, construction, O&amp;M, under the private sector, less so, more so, excuse me, than with the, uh, the similar courthouse. That concludes my presentation. Um, I, I live in this world, and I, I do my best not to be, uh, I don't know, offensive ivory tower, um, and, and to, to make this stuff accessible, but I, I never know if I, if I'm succeeding at that. So I welcome your questions, um, and be happy to, you know, start answering anything you might, you know, you might be wondering right now.
So this, this is a lease?
It's, well, it's publicly owned, but yes. I mean, that's what, some people would call it, I don't know, but...
Like a lease, right?
Yeah, it looks a lot like a lease. Um, and every year, the public is making a payment that is very similar to a lease payment. But the key is that they do own it. They have to buy it back at the end of the, the lease term.
So, so say again what happens at the end of the term?
Sure, at the end of, at the end of the term, um, the, the private sector partner is, is, is done, um, and the asset is, it's only been publicly owned, but, but at the end of the, we'll call it a lease, um, the private sector has a responsibility to turn the building over, in the, or, we'll say building, in a, you know, there's kind of like a facilities index is the, again, the jargon. But if it's at a one, that means it's brand new. And so at the very beginning, and, you know, at the beginning of the partnership, there will be an agreement on what percentage of, uh, how close to a one the have, the building has to be, and then they turn it back. Otherwise, they owe the public sector money to pick up those costs that are gonna be associated with fixing the roof, fixing the H-tracks, fixing the elevator.
After 30 years, that could be a pretty big ask, couldn't it? I mean, a building's pretty worn down after 30 years, especially the mechanical parts.
Well, I mean, it can be, unless it's well-maintained throughout. I mean, and that's where the perfor, so the performance standards, again, I, it's, it sounds kind of, uh, it's jargony, but, but at the very beginning, um, these things are really hammered out about, about how the building is gonna have to not just be operated or maintained. And there's an, there's an agreed-upon replacement reserve account that's created and scheduled for using those funds, um, that the private sector partner has to comply with. I mean, it's a contractual agreement. Otherwise, they're, they're in breach of contract.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, it's designed to avoid that, that deferred maintenance challenge that happens with so many assets, where it's, it's challenging enough to get the funding to initially build it, and then to operate and maintain it, is what it, you know, is a whole other challenge, in part because it's, um, not as, people love grand openings, but it's, you know, the, the real work is, is owning and maintaining the building, or an asset, I should say.
Despite of the Long Beach courthouse, how many other projects have been or are being done this way?
So in the US, few. Um, there are, there's, Long Beach is redoing its city hall and a civic center under this model. There's talk in Indianapolis of a courthouse, justice contracts, same kind of thing. In Canada, the, the list is, there's dozens, and dozens and dozens. In British Columbia alone, there's something like four dozen projects they've done over 12 years using this performance-based infrastructure model. And a lot of, a lot of their buildings are actually because of the way their healthcare system works, where the hospitals are all publicly owned. So they, they do a lot of building work in Canada, this, according to this model.
So as a, for right now, you, your primary thing is just getting the word out, I take it, 'cause you've...
Yeah.
You've been around a couple of years.
We've been around, oh yeah, so you've got our stuff. And, yeah, we've, we've been around about two years. Um, the first couple of years were really just complete startup phase. Um, about a year and a half ago, we got full ti, we got full-time staff, and we've, we've been going ever since. My colleague Scott is in the, is in the audience, and we're now, we're now three people. And yeah, we're here to get the word out, and to basically be a free resource to help, to help do these, you know, trainings, more than just trainings in just 20 minutes. Um, and then to the extent public, the public sector decision-makers are interested in pursuing the model, we, we have access to all the expertise of partnerships in British Columbia. So we can, you'll see it in our, in our services offered. But we can help screen a project. Um, if a project's screening says, "Yeah, it could make sense to do this as performance-based infrastructure," then the next step would be a business case analysis. We can help you procure that and digest that. We can help with RFPs and RFQs. So yes to getting the word out, but we're also here to provide technical assistance that goes deeper than that for jurisdictions that are interested.
So you guys are just based here for, like, you know, like, uh, California kinda has their own little group down there in Washington, up in Olympia, kinda thing?
Right, I would cover all three states. Um, yeah, so, um, we, we, uh, we're focused, it's, there's a lot of interest structure out there. We're looking, um, mostly at water, but not exclusively. Um, and so as opportunities arise, like when Jolene called, we, you know, that's our job. We, we're here to be of assistance. Um, but we do cover all three states, and to the extent that, that's a big geography, we've tried to limit our, our efforts by focusing, in large part, but not exclusively, on drinking, wastewater, water storage, and stormwater.
So who are the investors?
It's a mix. Um, the, the projects that have happened within the US so far have been, I'm, I'm thinking about the water sector. Um, they have been a union insurance, uh, trade union insurance fund that is looking for a place with safe returns. Uh, there's a project in New Jersey that was, uh, KKR, the kind of the big buyout specialist. They have an infrastructure equity fund, and they partnered with a letter provider. Um, and then when you start getting into the, the, in the transportation sector, like federal highways, those are multi-billion dollar projects. You start seeing big institutional investors, not so much the US, um, the Calstars or more than Perses yet, but you, you do see some sovereign wealth dollars in those, and you'll also see, like, Canadian pension funds have invested in some of those. Um, within the US, there's a lot of talk, especially in California, of marrying up the state pen, you know, state employee pension funds with these projects. Um, the issue, part of the reason we were created by the treasurer is their interest, is that there isn't much of a pipeline yet, and so there isn't much of a reason for those, those big institutional investors to invest their sunk costs and learning how to do this until they see that there's, there's a predictable flow of projects to invest in. But they're very interested in it.
Is, is there a likelihood that, uh, we could be looking at primarily foreign investors, and that our tax dollars might be going to pay for debt to a foreign country?
I, I, I mean, the foreign, there is foreign money that's interested in this because it's such a stable asset class.
Right.
Um, especially when you start talking about water. Um, but I, I just have to get you an answer on that, about, about, the water projects have been, which really trade union pension funds that are most interested in this, and that's, that's the area on their best. I'll, I'll look into what's been happening with transportation, 'cause I, I'd rather get you a real answer than make a guess.
I realize it's hard to think of Canada, our friends in Canada as being foreigners, but they are.
Right.
And that, that might be an issue along the line, so, uh, you know, it's, it's important to ask those questions.
No, no, it's a good question, so I just, I just need to get back to you. Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with Main Street?
With Main Street here in Gladstone?
Does that term mean anything to you?
Forgive me, no, it, it does not.
Okay. So you haven't worked with the Main Street organization?
No, sir.
That's working all of the United States?
No, sir. I said, like, can you tell anyone more about it?
It's a big organization.
Okay.
That's helping develop a majority, a great deal of the United States, uh, cities. And so I'm curious how much you knew about them.
I'll, I'll be the first to admit when I don't know things, so that's when I have to go and look up.
Well, but maybe one place you look?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so a lot of your stuff is sewer water, that kinda stuff, is that?
It's, what I wanna say is that as, um, our, we have a six-member board, two members from each state, and, and as we've asked them to help focus staff efforts, they have said, "Well, we're very interested in water." Um, I wanna say, that, that relates to the efforts where we go out and do a lot of research and a lot of cold calling to, um, to, to figure out where the opportunities might lie. But we are very interested in working with any jurisdiction, as any infrastructure project that, that wants to talk to us.
So water does fit this pretty good?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. I mean, water fits it really well because there is a stable revenue stream associated with the rates. Now, I mean, I don't want to be polaris. Regardless of how you do infrastructure, if you have a major infrastructure, water infrastructure project, like the cities in Oregon that are looking at eighty million dollar drinking water upgrades and towns of thirty thousand, it don't matter whether you do that design, bid, build, or performance-based infrastructure, rates are going to have to go up to pay for investment, period. Um, so water is, water works really well because it has rates. I just, I am a realist in that it can be very hard to get a rate increase associated with infrastructure, water infrastructure pass. But they've done it with water in the US. I was mentioning, there's been a project, there were a number of projects, actually Wilsonville did a, if you think back to that little blue chart, they did a design, build, operate project for their drinking water a few years ago. Um, it certainly answered your question, yes, water does work under the performance-based model.
That's right.
When, when you talk about water or sewer, either one-
Sure.
Are you talking about, like, treatment plants, or are you talking about the underground piping through the streets?
Um, primarily treatment plants, but I, everybody recognizes that there's a significant infrastructure need in dealing with the collection systems because many of them are fifty or eighty years old. Um, so the projects that I know of in the US have been new plants. The people I talked to at Water Utilities have started asking about how to deal with their piping systems. And it can be done, I think the issue is defining the scope of the repairs that are needed. Um, that's the net that's hard to crack, because everybody can tell when a crack appears and leaks start happening, but knowing exactly how much of that to replace at a single moment is one of the things that I think would have to happen at the outset to start attracting private sector interest.
Back to the, um, Counselor Johnson asked about the investors. Is there any sort of local control on the investors? I mean, is there a pool of investors that we could choose to use or to choose not to use?
There is, I mean, historically, there has not been much effort to try to stipulate who the investors are, but I don't think that's a nonstarter. I think the key is making sure that you have competition from the private sector, and so just making sure that if you're, if you want to start selective or making some differentiation about who the investors be, that you just do it in a way that remains inclusive, so that way you can get the benefit of a number of different private sector consortiums competing for your project.
Have you seen any of the plans that have went through full term? I mean, I know you're a fairly new company-
Right.
-and a lot of the stuff on the West Coast is fairly new, but are you talking about something, a project that had an O and M of thirty years?
No, we are not, so there are different variations on the model. Um, the one, there are design, build, operate facilities that do have a pretty good track record out there. They're not necessarily on the West Coast, but there are cities in Massachusetts and on the East Coast that have eight to ten years with, on a wastewater plant with a design, build, operate model. And that's one of the things that we're working on, is collecting the anecdotes from all these different organizations to figure out, are they happy, or aren't they? Because we don't want to be telling people it's not the solution if people have tried it and they say, I wouldn't do that again. Um, and to glean the lessons learned through the process. So there is, short answer, yes, there is a track record in terms of having private sector operations on a project long enough to know whether all the things you try to build into the contract at the beginning actually work.
So you're not aware of any that have actually completed and returned the operating and maintenance back to the original entity?
You know, there's, no, I, there are, so there are, I was thinking, there's a jurisdiction in California right near, right near San Francisco that has something like thirty or forty years working with one of the major, they're in this market too, they're very, they do, um, they do, I think it's Gresham's West Water Plant and they also are in Vancouver. So there's a history of long interaction, just the operations and maintenance where cities or towns will contract that out. But the fully integrated model, design, build, operate, no. I'm not aware of any that have been turned back over. I know that are, send that are ten to fifteen years into, or usually at least a twenty-year contract.
Anything else?
Well, I thank you guys for your time and your interest.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to do it, it's the reason we exist. I'll leave our materials with children, my contact info is there. Um, please don't hesitate to be in touch with any questions, and I already answered on the foreign investment, so I'll start working on that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, take her.
You need to be a little closer.
I couldn't hardly hear you.
Okay, we're going to move down to item number ten, which is the public hearing on the ordinance, on the ordinance one, four, five, six, which is the medical marijuana facilities as a conditional use in L one zoning district, or LI, I'm sorry, LI zoning district, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. So a little bit of background, because this is a very, very confusing area, this marijuana, because of the conflict between state law, local law, and federal law. Currently, as everyone knows, marijuana is still considered an illegal substance under the Controlled Substances Act. Federal law, you can't have marijuana, period. The state created a year ago medical marijuana dispensaries, or at least allowed licensing for dispensaries. Dispensaries kind of grew up in a gray area because you had growers and you had patients and there was no way to connect them, so these dispensaries just kind of started to pop up. The state decided, let's put some regulations on them and we'll license them. A lot of localities did not want to have dispensaries, so they started raising up their arms and say, no, no, no. To give it some time, the state allowed localities and municipalities to put a moratorium on any of these until May first of this year, 2015, which many cities did, including Gladstone. At the same time, Gladstone also passed an ordinance basically saying that you cannot get a business license in Gladstone unless you comply with the Controlled Substances Act. Because marijuana is illegal under that act, you really can't get a business license to operate a dispensary. That's the current state of affairs. There is pending litigation between the state, some cities regarding whether the dispensary law actually preempts a city from outright banning them even if it wanted to. Forget the federal law, can a city just say, we don't want dispensaries? And thus, dispensary law doesn't mandate that we create them. It just says if we want them, they have to be licensed. What a city attorney Doofman has recommended is that until we get a definitive answer on that, and it's going to come from a court, that's where we'll ultimately get our decision, because the moratorium effectively ends May first, 2015, in which the state kind of gave us a little bit of a guaranteed leeway, he believed it was in the best interest of the city to go ahead and pass an ordinance that has, allows for medical marijuana dispensaries just in the light industrial zone. But that would only take effect, this is the tricky part of it, it would only take effect if the city, if you guys decided to repeal the ordinance that put the business license restriction on complying with the Controlled Substances Act, which I don't know if you wish to do or not, you may want to just wait and see what the courts do. So you, as far as this ordinance tonight, if you pass this ordinance, and we'll have a hearing and people can comment on it, it would basically say that if the city ever decides to repeal the other ordinance on the business license rule, this ordinance would take effect and dispensaries could be allowed in the light industrial zone. Currently, under state law, they can be in the commercial zone, industrial, or mixed use, so this is limiting it. And what the city attorney Doofman is concerned about is if we don't have a regulation in place, and if we get a court ruling that says you can't prohibit these things, we're not going to be prepared at that moment on where they can go, and it could be that you start getting applications to be in any of those three zones, and in fact, you really want to limit it. Very confusing, and I know that.
Is that for both medical as well as recreational?
This has nothing to do with recreational outlets at this point, this is simply the medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay.
And those, the recreational will take effect next year, 2016. So you have some time on those.
So do we, are we looking at repealing an ordinance tonight, or just adding an ordinance?
We're looking at passing an ordinance that says if the courts come down with a decision, the state cities can't prohibit dispensaries anymore, you can't do it, that this, the ordinance tonight, if you pass it, will spring into effect, but you're not repealing any ordinance.
Thank you.
So the, um, in the charter, an ordinance to take effect, it needs to be writ on two different nights.
That's-
So this is going to be for tonight and then in two weeks?
That's the default. You can also read it by title only if there's, if it's unanimous, and it doesn't have to be-
And that would be an emergency, then?
It, no, it's not, doesn't require an emergency clause. The charter allows, the default in the charter says that an ordinance must be passed on two different meetings, but then it has exceptions, unless it's unanimous and the council decides that they want to do it in one night with two readings by title only. So you could do it in one, you could do it tonight. I don't know if you have a meeting planned for the twenty-eighth?
I think what you're referring to, we've adopted ordinances with an emergency clause before, that just means once adoption is made, it's, it immediately goes into effect. If you don't have the emergency clause, it takes thirty days to go into effect.
So this, so is this one then thirty days?
No, this one's scheduled to take effect on May first, 2015.
Okay. Fourteen forty-six, right?
Yes.
Anybody anything else before we take some public testimony? All right, let's take some public testimony. We have any cards on this issue? No cards on this issue? All right, well, is there any, is there any other discussion amongst the council members at this time?
And let me, one, add, one thing I'd like to add to, is this, this is a bare bones kind of just a fallback in case we get a court decision, and so we're not scurrying to work about, to worry about the zoning. This can be flushed out later at future council meetings. This is just the bare bones, saying it can only, they can only be in this one zone.
Okay. So do you want to read it, do you want to read the ordinance, or who's going to read the ordinance? And by title only?
A city council member would make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-six by title only, and, but I want to be clear, I'm not sure, do you guys have April twenty-eighth scheduled meeting? Do we need to read twice tonight?
We will, yes. We will, we will meet on April twenty-eighth.
So are you planning on doing it twice, tonight, you know, twenty-eighth?
It's up to council.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we have the first reading on ordinance fourteen forty-six.
I second that.
It's fourteen fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Fourteen forty-six is the old ordinance that created the business license.
Oh, okay, yeah, fourteen fifty-six that we read it, go ahead. Okay, so I have a motion from Counselor Nelson to read ordinance number fourteen fifty-six by title only and seconded by Counselor Mercero. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
You need to read the title first and then-
Right, right, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, I think we, I got lost in that we have to approve just a reading of the title, I thought we just read the title and then made the motion.
Charlie, what do you?
How do I read the motion?
There you go.
Ordinance number one, four, four-
No.
No.
One, four, five, six.
One, four, five, six, sorry. An ordinance amending title seventeen of the Gladstone Municipal Code to add medical marijuana facilities as a conditional use in the light industrial zone and declaring an effective date of May first, 2015.
Okay. So move. Is there any discussion amongst the councils?
One, one comment. Is it required for the word medical to be in this?
A medical marijuana facility?
Is it required for the word-
Yes.
-medical to be in it?
Yes.
Okay.
That has a specific meaning in the state law. And we use the term dispensary, the state law actually calls it a facility, so there's confusion even in the terminology, but generally, people refer to them as dispensaries. That's why it says facility in the ordinance, though officially.
Any further discussion on it? No worries. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion that we approve this.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's made by Counselor Nelson, seconded by Counselor Sickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And is unanimous? We need, we don't need to roll call a third time?
Yeah. Let's do it again. I make a motion for a second reading of ordinance number one, four, five, six. Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Counselor Sickman, seconded by Counselor Reisner. Can we do, we should do a roll call vote on this one?
Second reading.
For the second reading?
Have to read it. Ordinance number one, four, five, six, an ordinance amending title seventeen of the Gladstone Municipal Code to add medical marijuana facilities as a conditional use in the light industrial zone and declaring an effective date of May first, 2015. Now, Counselor Nelson?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Sickman?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobellus?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought it was obvious.
You passed the whole thing, it had to be read.
All right, moving on, let's see, we are on item number eleven. Eleven, replacement of the water main on Bellevue Avenue between Clackamas Boulevard and West Arlington Street. And we have-
Scott Taylor, Public Works Supervisor, any questions? It's pretty straightforward, I can explain the project. We have a two hundred, approximately two hundred and twenty feet of AC or asbestos concrete water main that is existing on Bellevue Avenue. It was installed approximately nineteen eighty. Uh, the installation was poor, it was shallow, there's a lot of debris that is not proper bedding for the pipes, so when heavy equipment goes over it, it burst. We had a problem with Lake Oswego's equipment just driving over it, and it cracked the main. So when that street gets rebuilt as part of the condition of Lake Oswego's coming through our town, I would like to have that water main replaced at a depth that is reasonable, that is, won't be damaged by any traffic, installed properly. There's only one existing service on that portion of the street. I had three bids for it. Timberline Development came in low bid. We were thinking at Public Works to do it in-house, we were close, within a thousand dollars, so it's a, it's a very quick project, shouldn't last more than two days. Questions?
My only question, Scott, is, so when they come in to redo it, we'll, they'll dig it up to do what they need to do, and then we'll slip ours in at the same time?
No, no, we're going to, this is a preemptive strike, we want to replace the water main prior to the street being rebuilt.
Okay.
So once the street is rebuilt, we don't have to open it up again.
We don't have any sewer or storm going down?
There's no, the sewer was running east-west on Clackamas, there's one water service on the corner house of, up there at Bellevue and West Clackamas Boulevard, so that will, service will be replaced. Basically, it's for getting rid of that AC pipe, putting in ductile iron, copper service, and eventually, that portion of West Clackamas, which is in our master plan infrastructures to run a new continuation of a six inch down to Beatrice, and then tie it back into Barton at that way, because that area's deficient as far as fire flows and fire protection.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to just wait, then?
No, 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 no. We want to install the main, replace it prior to Lake Oswego's rebuilding of the road.
Right. So what about the rest of Bellevue headed north?
Uh, there's nothing, that's the only section with the water main on it.
So there's no other water main- So there's no other water main not on, well, just Lake Oswego's? Okay.
Yeah. And they, and all of that will be rebuilt, uh, when they come through. So when, once their pipe installation is complete, it is, uh, going to be designed to come in and rebuild all of Bellevue, West Clackamas, uh, especially on Bellevue with curbs, storming system improvements and, so that will be done. This just gets that, uh, poor, poor quality pipe out of the way and sets us up so that when they come in, there's, won't be any problems with the pipe breaking.
So, uh, Lake Oswego, um, they, they broke this pipe as part of construction. Did they pay for any of the damages? Are they paying for this?
There's a bill out there. Basically, they just, they just drove over the pipe and it wasn't their fault as far as the pipe was located, the weight of the equipment, and the poor installation of the pipe was the cause of the break.
I believe, I believe the city did get reimbursed for that.
What was, what was the amount for that?
I, it-
It was a pretty low dollar amount.
It was very low.
Less than a thousand dollars.
Oh, yes.
Patch.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I want to thank you for getting, I had numerous questions on this and between emails earlier and your testimony tonight, you've answered almost all of them. I had one question. Um, this will also fix the depth of the pipe?
Yes, absolutely.
Now, both ends of the pipe are connected to something now-
Well, okay, uh, the pipe, uh, comes across Arlington Street. When they rebuilt Arlington Street, uh, Public Works at that time lowered the main and replaced it with ductile iron pipe and lowered it down, moved it over and got it across out of the construction zone during that rebuild of West Arlington Street. Uh, where we're going to run the new ductile iron pipe, we're going to hook to the existing ductile iron pipe and at that point, we can drop it down and lower it so that it'll be at the proper depth for, you know, good installation.
Thank you.
Is it going to be done to the standard that you planned on using for all the rest of the water pipe?
Yep.
Bedding, everything?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you're never going to have to dig it up again?
Nope. Well, never say never.
Let's go, let's go.
You know, I would like to say with a quality installation, good bedding and the proper depth, we will not have to deal with that water main and/or service for thirty, forty, fifty years.
You'll be retired by then.
And I'll be long gone out of here, you know, I-
You'll be buried with the pipe.
But I do, I, I don't want people to say it was taborized, so we'll just kind of make sure that it's done right.
So you're going to coordinate with Lake Oswego, so?
I've already, uh, they, in fact, they were one of the bidders. Uh, they, or their construction company, Caluccio was one of the bidders on that one. Frank, I mean, Jim Smith Excavating and Timberline Development. Uh, and yes, uh, at their request, that's why they want to be able to get in and get that job done without having to deal with that four installed main, so we'll get it out of their way ahead of time.
Will you have to throw down a patch then?
It'll be temporary patch, yeah, because they're going to be redoing all the asphaltic concrete and all that.
So, and is that patch included in the, in the bid then?
We'll just throw in, you know, cold mix on that. There's no pavement involved in this bid, no.
Okay. Everybody good? So, going, just content that we don't have to vote, just give the staff okay to prove it or do you got to vote on it?
Right. I'm here to ask questions.
Okay.
This is time sensitive. We want to get this project in and out of the way. They may not be out there for at least another twenty to thirty days to do the total rebuild.
Okay, I'm going to throw out a motion if everybody's asked all the quick, I'll make a motion that we accept this bid by Timberline Development for twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars.
I'll second that.
That's not the number.
Twenty-four thousand one fifty-two.
Yeah, I'm looking at the front page here that I can read.
It was, yeah. It's twenty-five, five, or two thirty-five on there.
Yeah, on there, it says twenty-five, two thirty-five.
Oh, we got a discount.
Um, I may have put a bid in for City, uh, City of Gladstone. Uh, just doing what it would cost us to install it, I believe that would be the, that one price on there.
Oh, the twenty-four?
The twenty-four was ours.
Fifty-two?
Yeah, that's what it would cost for us to do it in-house. I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion on that.
I should be-
You can strike that and take that bid from Timberline Development.
So that, I can scratch that one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's what it would cost, my estimates for doing it in-house.
So which, which one are we taking then now?
The Timberline Development bid, which is, uh-
Twenty-five, two thirty-five?
Forty maybe or ninety?
I think they're all zeros.
I couldn't read it.
Yeah, it, yeah, it would be helpful.
There. That's a more readable one.
There's a more, did you get that?
Okay, okay.
Okay. So I have, Len, you want to restate that then? You're then, just giving the number, give that most-
I'd like to, uh, approve, like most of that, we approve the, uh, construction on that water line at twenty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars from Timberline Construction.
Yep.
I'll second that. Okay, so I have a motion from, uh, Council Nelson to approve that contract and seconded by Council McMahon. Uh, let's have a little discussion if anybody wants to talk about it. No discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, there you have it.
Looks like a bang.
Yeah, yes, there.
Oh, Jesus, you guys with this.
Would you like, is that time for a four minute break?
Yeah, yeah, so let's keep running.
Number six.
Okay, so I think, so that's the last thing on the hearing before the number six, correct? So we are going to take a, mm, seven minute break. How's that?
See, I thought-
That is confusing.
On that ordinance thing, I thought we had to read the title and then someone made a motion to approve it. I didn't know we had to make a motion just to read it.
It is ridiculous. That's where I got all, I was ready to go, Jolene, just give me for a loop.
You have to approve it twice, not once, twice, yeah, for approval. There's be two readings.
I know that, but they also, we also made the motion to just, to read it, which didn't make sense to me. We didn't do it the last time. Somebody read the title and then we made a motion and then somebody seconded it, then we had a discussion, then we vote.
But you're making a motion for the first reading.
All right, now that's what, that's what you're doing.
I already knew that you were trying to say that. Yeah, you really, you don't think about it quite right. He could have gone over there and tagged it and then he would have given it.
It's just, it would be nine o'clock, wouldn't it?
Oh, no, it would be eight thirty, I think it would be.
Okay.
And the thing is, as you're asking for it, they're fairly-
We had time for him, uh, we really have to have that first couple of minutes.
Now the fun begins. That's going to hold three minutes. This will only take two minutes. Maybe they'll- So, it'd be short streak. I could graduate at dawn for being approved of that. Select it right at the very start. I missed all that.
Okay.
No, that's all right.
I need more.
Same way. Hey, Ken.
I'll hold it up.
Hello. My wife called us in on that property down there on Portland Avenue, uh, all that four five five, which they got that sink and everything in there.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, she just decided that there's just too many-
I noticed you said you just got the whole day though.
Yeah, the sink was put in, the plumbing, what we looking?
Well, it worries me they got that far before they ask about land use.
They got a hole in it. Yeah. I haven't, I haven't called her back yet because I put a call into the building department and find out what they have and where it's from. She told him, he called her today and she said, no, there's too many variations, there's too many things that you got to worry about. It's not worth it. You know, you don't want to, and then he's jumped, uh, for some reason, that if she makes it a property, we have a seventy-five hundred or eight thousand dollar sewer. And I'm thinking, John Jay? I'm thinking, I think I'd in there and they're hoping to back in there. Something isn't right.
It'd involve a-
Well, probably bad. Fine, how you doing? What are you here? She's about to make me a story. Oh, no. Takes a lot of heart. And, you know, I was just looking at- They beat her sand. I was sitting here and I was looking at the- To get, 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 to[1334.12] One of the biggest problems is that we need somebody who wants something, who knows what they want, so in fact we can get the funding.
Bang the gavel, go on. Bang it now. Bang it to the people.
Well, they want the trash cactus or they want this. They don't want anything but I want this.
Good, how you doing?
I'm good.
Did you look at it? Oh, okay, yeah, I...
I was pretty excited to hear.
Oh, okay. Okay, cool.
I was excited to hear that right back here.
Yeah, that's it, I think, yeah. That was it. Hey, Clay, I will, I guess I'll ask her, she'll know. I'm having a hard time coming up with the number amount, the dollar amount to ask for. All right, thanks, bud. Pete's gonna sit back there and see. I did just... How are you? Uh-oh, Neil ran off on us. We lost Neil. Oh, there's Steve. You would've figured that one out, I'd say. Number... I see Pete's out there. Uh, he got kicked out by Clay. So we should be done in about five minutes, right? Yeah.
Karen, would you go get Neil?
No, I think he disappeared on us. I think he's addressing all of this. Well, that's what Shane's gonna discuss.
Okay, uh, welcome back, everyone. We're reconvening our, uh, city council meeting and we are still in the regular agenda and we're going to item number six, which is the public hearing on the appeal of the planning, of planning commission approval to co-locate wireless communication antenna on a P G utility pole located in front of seven two five Portland Avenue. Um, and per se, speakers will be allowed three minutes to provide testimony, but, uh, city attorney Shane is gonna kick us off and give us some kind of ground rules.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Timestamp.
Oh, I'm sorry, at seven thirty six, seven thirty seven, I'm sorry, P M.
Ready? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. First, staff will present the staff report. The council may ask questions of the staff at that point. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and time will be limited as follows. The applicant gets twenty minutes, split between both presentation and rebuttal. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the application get three minutes each. Persons opposed to the application then get three minutes each. Then the rebuttal time from the applicant, if any, and that again will be the remainder of the twenty minutes. The mayor then may close the public hearing, which means there will be no more comments heard from the public or the applicant at that point. Final comments by staff, if any, will occur, then questions of staff, if any, by the council, and finally discussion, deliberation, and an oral decision by the city council. If you wish to speak, please sign in with your name and address and come forward to the microphone. When you do come forward to the microphone, please also again state your name and address for the record. In making a decision, the council must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations, as well as other applicable law. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria only or other criteria that you believe is applicable to this decision. Please note, if you fail to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to enable the city council, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. The applicant's failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I'd like to ask members of the city council to disclose any ex-party contacts, biases, or conflicts of interest. First of all, have any members of the council visited the site? And I suppose we can go down the road.
I have. I've walked past.
Okay, councilor.
Yes.
I've walked past it all the time.
Same here.
Yes.
Have members of the city council had any other ex-party contacts? Typically, an ex-party contact is gonna be a conversation with someone, but it can also mean that you've read the newspaper article about this, if there was one, you heard an opinion piece, you heard a radio slot. So, any ex-party contacts, meaning any information that you have gleaned outside of this hearing or any of the testimony that has already been provided in the record?
No.
None for you, councilor Nelson, is that you say? No?
No.
No. I received at home an unsolicited mailing prior to the, uh, planning commission meetings that was in opposition to the cellphone tower. Uh, I haven't, no.
I've, I believe, received probably the same letter that, uh, Council Johnson received and also there's been different postings, uh, just announcing the, uh, planning commission meetings on, uh, next door Gladstone. That's all the information that I've seen.
Uh, same for me, the next door Gladstone, and then I also looked at the, uh, planning commission minutes, uh, the other day, watched the video, so that just correlates to what was in the packet.
Um, I have got several. Um, my first contact was with a property owner next to, uh, the site that it wasn't even an application at the time. Um, she found some people wandering around on her property and the neighbors measuring things up and she went out and asked what was going on. Um, and they had told her that it was a cell tower, um, and she called me and wanted to know what I knew about it. I knew nothing about it. Um, I checked with, uh, the city and the county and they knew nothing of it. So, there was no information to really, uh, discuss. Um, I have had, seen things on social media, I've received the same letter, I have spoken, I've had contacts from several residents, um, actually too many to recall, um, and I've just explained to them that at this time I don't know what's going on because I hadn't been privy to the planning commission minutes or their meetings, I hadn't seen any of their documents. Um, I did have a conversation with Mr., uh, I believe, Cato, the, I believe, the appellant on this, um, and his, he called me and was asking about process of appeal. And I explained to him that I could not discuss anything to do with the cell towers, the application, um, but I did take and have discussion with him on appeal process.
Okay.
So...
And I just, it just jogged my memory. I think he was at the, uh, coffee with the counselor and it came up and I... I don't think there was much of a conversation except that it was happening and then it was in the hands of planning commission, but that's the only thing I had. Forgot about that.
Any further ex-party contacts? Does any council member have bias? Bias is defined as you've reached an opinion so strongly that you are going to vote one way or the other before you hear any testimony. So you can have opinions, you can even have strong opinions, but bias is that you've reached a point where you already have your mind made up. Does anyone on council have that?
Nope.
Nope.
I don't, no.
Does any council member have a conflict of interest, either potential or actual?
No.
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 Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any city councilor's ability to participate due to bias? Or conflict of interest? With that, Mr. Mayor, you can begin the process of...
Okay, um, the staff will now present the staff report. Hello, I'm Clay Glasgow. There's a lot of folks here and because of that I'm going to be brief, but there are a few tidbits I need to toss out there just for the record. Uh, this is an appeal of a planning commission decision. That decision was an approval to co-locate wireless communication antenna on a P G utility pole located in the right of way for Portland Avenue in front of seven two five Portland Avenue with the associated ground mounted equipment to be located in the backyard at that address. Uh, the applicable review standards are located at seventeen point one eight, seventeen point six one, seventeen point nine four, and the development standards of Title Seventeen of the Gladstone Municipal Code, your favorite book. Uh, the planning commission started the public hearing for this on January twentieth of this year to consider the proposal. Uh, testimony was taken. Uh, it got a little late, the hearing was continued to the following regularly scheduled meeting, which was February seventeenth, to allow for further testimony and discussion. Uh, both public hearings were well attended. Residents voiced concerns on visual impacts, noise, uh, and smoke, uh, from the generator, health concerns. Uh, the planning commission carefully considered, I think, these, uh, these concerns along with the relevant review standards and came up with a decision of approval. Um, and that was at the second hearing, February seventeenth. There were conditions added to help mitigate, uh, some of the impacts and to address some of the concerns brought up by those who are testifying. And now it's before you this evening on an appeal of that. Uh, generally speaking, what you're looking at here is a co-locate, uh, cellular communication facility. This is not a cell tower. This is, uh, some antenna gonna be stuck on the side of a replaced P G utility pole, uh, one of the string of poles along that side of Portland Avenue. Uh, it's in the C two zone. The C two zone allows this type of use outright, uh, subject to review. And that's, and that's what we're doing here this evening, that's what the planning commission did. Um, and with that, I think I'm just gonna take questions. I think you've all looked at the, the record, you've looked at the minutes. Sounds like some of you have actually watched the previous hearing and, uh, gone through the tape on that, so that's good. Um, but unless you have any other questions, I'll just sit here quietly until you do. Do you have any questions in staff right now? Okay, um, the applicant may now present testimony and arguments. As a reminder, you have twenty minutes for both your initial presentation and any rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is Mike Connors with the law firm Hathaway Coback Connors, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, with me in the audience today as well is Jake Hamilton with Virtual Sightwalk. He's the consultant that has been working on this matter and is continuing to assist me with the appeal. Um, I think Mr. Glasgow did a good job of sort of describing the proposal, but I'm gonna touch on that a little bit, uh, talk about some of the key relevant criteria, and then briefly address the appeal that's before you. Uh, hopefully you, uh, have before you the letter that I submitted yesterday, which was to just give you some sort of written response to the appeal so you can understand where we're coming from. And I'm not gonna go through ad nauseam that letter, but highlight some of the key points. Um, so what we're proposing is, is a co-location proposal where we're gonna, uh, mount six antennas to the utility pole in front of the seven twenty five Portland Avenue, uh, address. Um, the pole's gonna be, uh, increased in height and the reason for that is you have to have separation between the P G facilities and our antennas, otherwise there can be some operational interference. And then that pole will go from currently sixty feet to eighty feet and, um, will be replaced with a new pole, which will be, uh, very similar in circumference. And the reason for that is that because of the additional weight and height, uh, P G E, which controls the structural requirements, uh, is, it's not certain, but it's very likely, are gonna, um, propose a new replacement pole to accommodate our facility. Um, the property and surrounding area is Zone C two, uh, Community Commercial, and in that zone, this particular type of use is an outright permitted use subject to the, uh, telecommunication facility criteria in chapter seventeen point six one. And one of the key things that you need to understand in that chapter is the city is a matter of policy, like a lot of other jurisdictions, strongly encourages carriers to co-locate. In fact, your code actually requires that a carrier, before proposing a new tower, exhaust all practicable co-location options. So this particular proposal is the type of proposal that, that the city has determined through its code encourages, like a lot of other jurisdictions, and the reason for that is that you already have a utility pole there. Yes, there'll be some additional impacts, it's gonna increase the height, but the impacts are gonna be far less than you would have if you had a brand-new telecommunication tower, uh, which will likely be even taller, but would be a brand-new tower and those impacts with a new facility as opposed to a replacement facility. Um, co-location proposals are subject to a different set of criteria than a new tower and those are in seventeen six one oh six oh through one hundred. And if you look at those, um, and you look at our application and planning commission's decision, it's pretty clear that we comply with all of the specific criteria. Uh, your code expressly allows, uh, carriers to replace in a co-location situation the existing structure. It allows or provides for a height limit of twenty additional feet, which is what we have here. There's no dispute that we're going twenty feet above the existing pole. Um, it requires as part of addressing the visual impacts from this facility that we screen the ancillary facilities, which in this case is the equipment cabinet, and that's gonna be on the adjacent property. Uh, it's gonna be screened with a six-foot tall, uh, screening fence, as well as, uh, fairly extensive landscape buffering, uh, around that fence. And then for purposes of the antenna, it requires screening or painting to blend in with the pole or the background area, which we're proposing here as well. In fact, I think during the planning commission process, planning commission made a specific recommendation on type of paint they felt would blend in with that pole. Um, and so what you have before you is a proposal that is consistent with your policy of encouraging co-location and strictly complies with all of the relevant approval criteria. Um, your city staff has recommended approval, both at the planning commission level and presumably today, although I, I don't know that he made that specific statement, but I believe that that, uh, is planning staff's position. Uh, and perhaps more importantly, in the planning commission, after extensive deliberation, they, they heard the testimony, they asked a lot of hard, pointed questions, um, unanimously, uh, voted to approve the facility because I think they recognize that even if there are certain aspects of this type of facility, uh, that create impacts and that some of the neighboring property owners, uh, you know, may not like. I mean, honestly, this is not everybody's favorite type of development, but I think that they recognize that if you look at the code, we clearly meet it and if you look at the fact that what we're providing is a service to the city that's a, a vital, critical service, uh, you see the explosion in terms of number of people using, uh, both, uh, smartphones and what they use them for. Uh, the, the amount of increase in data traffic on, on our devices has increased exponentially. And so part of what you're seeing is some of these network build-outs are not just to cover additional areas, but they're, they're to accommodate capacity, meaning that you have so much data traffic that the current network gets overloaded. And that's when you get into some of the problems that we all get frustrated with when our phone won't work or won't work as fast as we want. And this is the type of facility that's designed to try to offload and, and help accommodate that, uh, type of data traffic. Um, switching quickly to the, uh, appeal, uh, and again, we address this in our letter, but, um, the appeal really focuses not on what we view as the approval criteria, but on this purpose statement, because the purpose statement contains a number of different goals that are intended by, uh, the, uh, telecommunication facility, uh, chapter of your code. Um, but the purpose statement itself is not an approval criteria. Those are a list of goals, and if you look at the language in your code, those goals are designed to be, uh, furthered through the adoption of specific design and citing standards. The specific design and citing standards are the standards that are set forth in the remainder of that chapter and in co-location is the sections that I talked about, seventeen six one point oh six oh through one hundred. Um, and so one of, I think, the disagreements that we have is that those particular provisions aren't in and of themselves the approval criteria. They're the goals that are implemented through the actual approval criteria. The appeal doesn't argue nor do we see any evidence or any credible argument that we failed to comply with approval criteria. So if you apply, if you comply with the approval criteria, you are by definition deemed to be consistent with those purpose statements, uh, from our perspective. But addressing just some of them very quickly, um, one of the first ones deals with visual impacts and notes the fact that, uh, that this facility will be taller than any of the surrounding structures and trees, and that is true. Um, you know, there are utility poles that line down Portland Avenue, as you know, that are sixty feet and there are some trees in close proximity, which was one of the reasons that we, we selected this site because there is a fairly significant tree in close proximity. But it is taller than all those structures, but that's always the case because the way this technology works is it's really, uh, not to get into too much of the technicality, so I'll try to dumb it down, it's a line of sight. And so these facilities have to see the next facility that they're handing off the signal on down the line. And that's why in your code, it doesn't actually contain a, a requirement that it be limited to the size of surrounding structures because these facilities wouldn't work if that was a requirement. Uh, in fact, conversely, it specifically allows in co-location to increase up to twenty feet, which is what we're doing here. Um, another issue that was raised in the appeal is that the facility doesn't blend in with the surrounding area because viewing the sky, the sky's constantly changing. It'd be blue sky, gray sky, different variations of that. Well, the code doesn't require that it be painted to blend in to accommodate every different circumstance. In fact, that would be impossible to satisfy. What it does require you to do is to blend in with the pole or the facility. And I think at the planning commission, there was some discussion about trying to match the color of the pole, so to blend in with that. That seems to work for us, but that was just something that the planning commission proposed. But that's sufficient to meet that criteria. You can't impose a criteria interpretation, that is impossible to meet, that isn't actually required in your code, that you deal with the changing circumstances. Uh, next issue had to deal with concern about potential damage, uh, to the adjacent structures because that's one of those purpose statements. But the purpose statement talks about ensuring that there's not damage to adjacent structures through setbacks and through structural requirements. Well, there's no dispute that this facility satisfies the setback criteria and it satisfies the structural criteria. In fact, P G E is gonna be the one that's gonna require and demand that we build it according to their very high structural standards, which are consistent with the state, uh, construction standards. Um, and then lastly, the appeal notes that it doesn't provide for additional carriers. Um, and really what that's, that particular provision that they're pointing to is, is directed at new towers. So if you're gonna allow a carrier to come in and build a new tower, which is gonna have more impact than a co-location, you're gonna wanna make sure that that tower can accommodate future carriers on it so that you don't have each one building a new tower. But it doesn't apply to co-location. In fact, in a co-location, especially on a utility pole, you can't really accommodate multiple carriers on it and to the extent that you could, it would just add additional height, which is more visual impact. And so I understand where that comment's coming from, but I don't think it's consistent with the code and I think it actually would lead to more visual impacts than, significantly more visual impacts, even if it was, uh, physically possible. Um, so for those reasons, uh, again, if you look at the application and the criteria, we think we strictly meet all of the criteria. Uh, that's why your planning staff recommended approval, that's why the planning commission unanimously approve, uh, voted to approve this. And I think what hopefully you can see, both in the letter and what I've talked about tonight, is that the appeal, although I understand where Mr. Cato is coming from, doesn't really direct to the approval criteria and doesn't provide a basis upon which to determine that we don't comply or it should be denied. Um, and so with that, that concludes my initial comments and I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal, unless you have any questions.
Question, uh, can, can we ask questions above and beyond the appeal or do we have to limit ourselves to the three items that were brought up in appeal?
It's the city attorney's office's opinion that this is a de novo hearing. And so we disagree with, uh, the applicant and that you were limited to those, meaning that this is a start over in all criteria, and I believe that's the city planner's opinion as well. Is that, is that your question?
That's my question. So I would ask a question, uh, related to, uh, emergency power generation. Uh, does Verizon use any other source of emergency power generation besides diesel generators anywhere?
Um, we do. I don't have specific examples to give you to make sure, I think you understand this from the way that you're asking the question. We originally proposed a diesel generator and at the planning commission, there was a request that we change that to a battery backup and we've agreed, it's not an ideal situation, but we've agreed to go along with it because we understand that it would reduce, uh, the noise impact.
So you are going to switch to a battery backup then or is it just gonna be, is it, is it, is there gonna be a diesel generator on site?
No, there's not gonna be diesel generator on site.
Oh, okay, that's new news.
Is that right? Yeah. Making sure, talking to Jake.
Thank you.
And if I could just clarify one thing on the scope of the appeal. It is our position that the scope of the appeal is limited to the issues in the appeal and that for purposes of basing your decision, you need to base it on those particular arguments in the appeal. But like we did in our letter, we understand that other people are gonna raise comments. I'm happy to answer questions, to respond to those. I didn't mean to suggest that you cannot talk about anything besides the appeal. We just think those are the, those are the basis that you need to review for purposes of making your decision.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, one of the questions that I had after going through this, um, is on the buffering, uh, the vegetation buffering.
Uh-huh.
Uh huh.
At one point, it says that you used, will use a slow-growth type vegetation and for maintenance purposes.
Correct.
Is the intent, or would you have a problem with making sure that when the plantings went in, they were adult or full-size vegetation? Considering they're slow-growing, we wouldn't want to wait 10 years for them to get to actual height?
Yeah, the one difficulty, this question has come up before, and in terms of full growth, that's difficult for us to agree to just because it's such a subjective standard, difficult to find plants. But it is our intent to get mature plants, to not plant little seedlings and let them grow over time. I mean, it is to provide screening that actually serves the purpose that it's intended to do.
Okay, so you would be acceptable to adding mature plants, the term mature?
Yes.
Something that's six foot, if you've got a six-foot fence, you would have, maybe not mature plants at that point, but at least plants that would be six-foot in height to cover that, or like they were saying, you don't want to wait 10 years for it to reach six foot. That'd be ridiculous.
Yeah, I think it would be acceptable with the use of the term mature, which I think gets to your point, counselor, and we would agree to that.
I've got a couple. So in the paperwork, reading through this, it's called POR Gladiator?
Correct.
So what's the POR stand for?
Just Portland Metropolitan Area. It's an internal acronym that Verizon uses to identify site.
And I was curious as to, are we past the 120-day rule, or did the applicant waive that?
No, but we're going to talk about that.
Oh, okay.
We are approaching it. It'll be the 19th.
Okay. And was, being that the city is a customer of Verizon, did that play a part into any of this proceedings, starting back last year when the application was made?
No.
Okay. Actually, let's see, question also, I don't know if this is, I'm going to wait on this till after, till later. I've got a couple more that might go staff, might go somewhere else, so that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Any other questions right now from us? Okay.
Thank you.
Questions later. Okay, at this time, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Just as a reminder, individuals are limited to three minutes, please. Anyone want to speak in favor of the application?
Cards, you got a card.
Oh, you got them in your hand?
That's hard, they don't indicate if they're in favor or not.
Okay, well, I'm assuming if you didn't stand up, that means we don't have any that are in favor. I'm not the brightest, but I did figure that one out.
Good to hear.
At this time, does anyone wish to speak against the application? As a reminder, individuals are limited to three minutes, and at this time, you'll go through the cards and call them up one at a time.
Yes, sir. Could we have Mindy Garland come up?
There you go.
I'm Mindy Garland. I live at 7,000 Debbie Court, and my zip code is 97027. And if I say something I'm not supposed to say, then you just tell me kindly, okay? All right. So to the mayor and the city council members, you have heard our opposition to this cell pole proposal, and there are many letters in this packet that we've all gotten, none of which are in favor of this project. At this point, we have not heard of anyone in favor, much less the property owner himself. I think if I was looking to make money off my property, I would be here to argue in favor of the project, not hide. We want our voices to be heard and need to know that our points of view as Gladstone residents are being considered. So my first concern is that we kept hearing that they had researched the spot, and maybe it's none of our business, but none of us has seen or heard of a Plan B, and I would think that if, just given the fact that Verizon has a lot of money, that they would have had a Plan B, and couldn't that be an option, you know, another spot? We're not opposed, we're just saying that maybe a different placement. There were some real concerns coming from the fire department about this placement, and have all of those concerns been addressed and carefully looked at? I do believe there's a letter in tonight's packet addressing them. And the third thing I'd like to ask of Verizon is, we've kind of, as, you know, obviously there's some of us that have been milling around about this for a few days, and we've heard that that tree next to the little, or on the property is coming down. So where's the guarantee that that tree's not coming down? That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Voice, can you adjust the microphone at the podium, please? Thank you.
I like that.
Next is Peter Shearer.
Hi, Peter Shearer, 1525 Columbia Avenue in Gladstone. My lovely wife put a petition on change.org opposing this cell pole, if you want to call it that, and so I gave the recorder copies of that to hand to each of you. On the last two pages of this packet are comments that people posted on the site, and I just wanted to read them to you to give you a flavor of what people are saying about this. So again, it's on the last two pages, so, and I'm going to say their names. So Grant Canterbury from Gladstone commented, "This does not seem to be a use compatible with our community's goals for the character downtown." Kathy Stapleton of Gladstone commented, "We do not need another cell tower so close to the others, and we certainly do not need, do not want or need one in downtown Gladstone. Put it among the trees over by Meldrum or somewhere inconspicuous. Preserve our historic town." Denise Heinz from Gladstone commented, "It does not belong in downtown Gladstone. I concede on McLaughlin Boulevard, but not on Portland Avenue, which is so close to homes and a great school." Samantha Shemizu from Gladstone commented, "We do not need this tower ruining the beauty of our town." Susanna Berman commented, "Shame on Gladstone Planning Commission on approving such a selfish decision. Our community doesn't want or need an 80-foot cell tower in the heart of our town. City Council, we voted you in, and we can vote you back out." Just say how upset people can get about this. Helen Van said, "Gladstone is historic, and there's no value to a cell tower to improve the preservation of the city. There are plenty of areas outside the city that can be utilized, not in downtown. What are you thinking? I guess you're not." Roger Holloway stated, "We do not need this place in the center of town. Put it in my backyard, and let me collect the rent." And finally, Mary Ann Thrasher commented, oh, actually, two more. Mary Ann Thrasher commented, "I agree, there are many other, more appropriate locations for a cell tower. This cell carrier can jump on the tower with the others already built, or just find another spot. My service has always been fantastic, and I've never heard of anyone complaining they can't get service around here. No, thank you." And then Courtney Boell from Gladstone commented, "This tower will be an unwanted eyesore. Cell service isn't currently an issue in our city, so this is an unnecessary addition to our community." That's just a comment, some of the comments I wanted to read. I think we're accepting a lot of assumptions that the attorney and the virtual site location person has made to both the planning commission and to you as a city council, and I just ask that you carefully examine their assertions, you know, such as, we have looked, you know, in a lot of different areas, and, you know, it has to be put right on Portland Avenue. So I would challenge that assertion. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next?
Next is Kathy Stapleton.
Hi, Kathy Stapleton, 695 East Clarendon Street. Not being a lawyer, or any, I'm not, I don't understand the, when we talk about proposals and codes and so forth, I don't understand all that, and many of us, I don't think, do. But we do know what we like as far as beauty and so forth, and a lot of us have a, me in particular, have a problem with putting something like that there. When you can look out, you can see three towers. Now, I don't know if they're AT&amp;T, Verizon, or what, but on the next-door media, I put a question to the public as, who has Verizon, and do they have problems? Nobody responded that they had a problem until, I don't know, a month later, some fellow put on there, and I don't remember his name, that he was having some problems. But I asked at the other meeting if they couldn't possibly put boosters on the other towers rather than create a new one or co-locate. But I, excuse me, I just don't understand when somebody submits something to the planning commission. I asked at that meeting, does that mean it's a go, or do you decide, the city council decide what? Who decides whether it's going to happen? And maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I was told that they just look at the logistics and see if they've met all the criteria for this. And if they did, I guess I was under the assumption, then it would go to some kind of a vote to the community. So that's my ignorance, obviously. But it just sounds like once the planning commission gets a hold of something, that it just happens. And, I mean, I don't want another problem like we've got down here with the water thing. I mean, that's ugly. But, okay, that's mine, two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dave.
Michael Swigel.
Gatto, sorry.
Thank you for your time, by the way. I'm kind of became the name and the face of this appeal, being the property owner adjacent to John's apartment, property where this is going to be cited. I thought it was really important-
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I'm 130 East Fairfield. Sorry.
Just keep us out of trouble.
Yes, no, you're right. You're right. Thank you. Yeah, 130 East Fairfield, directly behind the property where this is going to be cited. I thought it was really important to follow through with the appeal. I thought the planning commission listened to our arguments. But I thought it was important for my neighbors who raised the money for the appeal, $5, $10, $25 at a time, that felt dispassionate about it, that it didn't really fit in our community. I understand the codes that you folks all have to work under and the restrictions that you're dealt with. But I thought it was important for the community to go through this procedure and come and talk to you folks, and have you folks hear what we had to think and what we had to say. It doesn't fit. I mean, selfishly, I don't want that sited 10 feet from my bedroom, but that's a selfish thing. That's not for the betterment of all of Gladstone. I understand that. But I thought it was important to go through the process, and a lot of folks have put a lot of work and time in this. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your service, actually. It's important what you folks all do. So, thank you. Thank you.
And last is Glenda Shearer.
Hi, my name is Glenda Shearer, and I reside at 1525 Columbia Avenue. And I have Verizon, I'm a Verizon customer. We have no problem with our data. I never have a call dropped, so I just want to point that out. I am here to testify today as one of hundreds of Gladstone residents who are adamantly opposed to the placement of any cell tower on historic Gladstone Avenue, I'm sorry, historic Portland Avenue. Just this afternoon, I learned something that is very concerning that I need to bring to your attention. According to Linda Price with Clackamas County, the property that the Katos reside at is actually zoned R5 and not C2. The staff report that was written and provided to the planning commission is wrong. The planning commission subsequently based their ruling on erroneous information. What are the implications of this error? The Katos and others were not given the opportunity to have the correct zoning taken into consideration by the planning commission. Therefore, any ruling from the planning commission cannot be considered valid. It is based on an error. We are a group of people who love Gladstone and would like to preserve the historic nature of our community, specifically the Portland Avenue area where the inner-urban trolley line ran many years ago. There are 14 historic properties that line and dot Portland Avenue that will be in visual sight of this cell tower that is 80 feet tall. Each one of you was elected by the people of Gladstone, who believe that you would guard, improve, and preserve our community. These Gladstone residents who live there are in their homes seven days a week, 365 days a year. We are not disputing Verizon's right and need to place cell towers. We are disputing the location on our beautiful area.
Thank you.
Is that it for the cards, Julie?
That's all.
Okay, at this time, does anyone, I guess the answer would be no, but I'll ask the question anyway. Does anyone wish to provide neutral testimony? That being no. Does the applicant wish to provide rebuttal tennis testimony? And I kept track of time, so you've got roughly five minutes left.
Thank you again for the record. Mike Connors here on behalf of the applicant. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going into point-by-point response, but I did want to respond to some of the comments that were made. As I indicated in my earlier comments, you know, we appreciate the fact that this is not the favorite kind of development that neighbors want. We all need and use our phones, but we want those antennas to be located somewhere other than near our property. But they have to go somewhere, and that's why you set up a code the way that you set it up to try and drive carriers to site and design these facilities in a way that will have the least amount of impact. And we view this as the type of facility that achieves that purpose. I understand that there are some comments, questions about whether there's a need for this kind of facility. Trust me when I can say that Verizon doesn't go about citing these facilities for a reason other than there being a need. I mean, this is an expense, expensive process they have to go through. They understand that it kind of gets a community upset, riled at them. It's not something that they do voluntarily just for the sake of doing it. We truly do look at a need which is then passed down to site act people that say, there's a need for a facility in this location, go out and find one that can comply with the local criteria, and that's what happened here. I've been doing these types of hearings for a long time, and it's quite common for people to say, go somewhere else. And I appreciate that. Again, you want it to be somewhere else besides in your backyard. But the problem is, is that the network, in the beginning days, you could kind of cherry-pick the sites because you're just building out the first part of the network. But now, the network for almost all of the carriers is very mature, and there's such a huge increasing need for these kind of facilities that now we're down to doing infill facilities. So we don't just have the ability to say, that looks like a good location, let's put it there. What drives it is the need in a particular location, either provide coverage or provide capacity because there's a high data traffic area. That's what this particular site is. And like I said earlier, trust me, we wouldn't do this unless we felt that there was definitely a need. There was a comment raised about the adjacent property being zoned R5. I'm certainly not aware of that. I looked at, the mapping that I looked at in preparation for this hearing, I didn't see that zoning on any of the maps. But even if that were the case, it wouldn't change the issues before you because there's no prohibition or additional requirements that would apply if you have an R5 property next to this. Again, I think all the evidence in the record, at least from my knowledge, that this area, the surrounding area, including adjacent properties, are all zoned C2. So I guess we'll rely on that. There was a comment made about, some comments that the fire department made, and they were just raising questions about potential interference with their facilities. We address this at the planning commission level, but just to assure you, there will be no interference issues. We operate on a dedicated frequency FCC license. We have to strictly comply with those frequencies, otherwise we get in big trouble with the feds, and we're not going to put ourselves in jeopardy there. Whereas, emergency responders have their own frequencies, and I can tell you from past experience that it's quite common for us to co-locate our antennas on police stations and fire departments because, again, a lot of it is driven by the amount of data that's required, and those are uses that need a lot of data, and so- And so, there are often circumstances where we have these located at the actual police department or fire department. And so, I think the fact that the fire marshal's not here raising these concerns, I think at least is good evidence that we satisfied his concern on that issue. And with that, those are just the issues I want to address unless you have any additional questions. That concludes my presentation.
One thing that was mentioned was, well, it was mentioned in here, and I was just kind of curious as to what other, you know, what other testimony before asking you earlier. Just a couple of blocks north is the high school. They have several poles already that would probably love to be extended another twenty feet that wouldn't be in somebody's backyard. So, can you expand on what was mentioned in here because it wasn't very clear as to why you couldn't have it, like at the high school, which the income sure would help replace a football field that's going to be needing to be replaced in a few years.
Yeah.
So, it's going to wear out. You have another championship down the road, but-
So, there's a couple things. First of all, the search area that we have in mind is a pretty small area because it's what I called earlier a capacity site. So, there's a lot of data traffic in this particular area. It's about a four-block area. A proposal in the school, I can tell you from past experience, even on proposals that are in close proximity to school, talk about wanting to pack the halls in here with people. You will have parents that will jam-pack your city hall and say, how dare you put one of these facilities in a school, close proximity to my children, et cetera.
You don't know-
Hold on.
I'm sorry, let you finish.
So, that's part of the reason why we typically don't try to gravitate to those kind of sites because it raises more issues, questions, and concerns than would be the case on a different facility. And so, in this case, I guess, you know, what we're looking at is, again, we've got a street lined with utility poles. This is going to replace the poles, so it's only going to be the additional twenty feet. And then we do have the trees, and somebody made a comment earlier about the tree being removed. I have no knowledge of that, and I asked Jake about that. This seemed like the most appropriate site that satisfied our capacity needs, satisfied the code. And, you know, I guess a general response is, no matter where we move it, there's going to be some adjacent property owners or some affected party that, for many of the reasons the folks here don't want it in their particular neighborhood. And so, I don't know that you can avoid some kind of opposition from neighboring properties.
Another question I have is on page 613, highlighted paragraph. This is in fact, the proposed, this is from Hatfield Dawson Consulting Engineers. In fact, the proposed vision wireless operations at the project site will not have a significant environmental impact as defined by the FCC public MPE limits. So, what's significant?
Oh, boy, that's something that could take hours to try to go over because it gets into the federal regulations. But there's a federal process that all carriers have to go through where you submit it to a federal agency, NEPA, and they do evaluation on a consideration of different criteria. They can be environmental, you know, whole host. And then those agencies make a determination as to whether they think legally it qualifies as a significant impact. And then they go back to the carrier and say, we've identified these significant impacts, how are you going to mitigate them? And then a carrier gets an opportunity to try to mitigate them, see if they can satisfy them. Or in some cases, they make a determination of no significant impact.
So, and then, this is kind of one of a far-fetched kind of question, but something that I thought of on my way home a couple of days ago. Coming down McLaughlin, going on McLaughlin by 205, there's a PG, not PG, ODOT has a structure that runs across the intersection, you know, made out of metal. So, would our code allow you or somebody else to put a structure like that across and put a pole on top of it?
Across what?
Across Portland Avenue. Like an art?
Clay, I think, then.
Oh, okay, my apologies. All right, okay. Well, I'll ask Clay then later.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I think that's about my, that's about there, except for comments, which I'll save for later.
No diesel generator, right? That's an absolute-
Correct. Okay. Yeah, in fact, there's a condition that requires us to use a battery.
Good, very good. Anybody, anybody from the council have any more questions for?
I have a couple.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
People's mentioned that, I'm not sure if it was you or Verizon or whoever it was, that there were options reviewed prior to decision to put it in this particular spot. Where is that documented?
So, there's not a specific document that's in the record because the code doesn't require that we demonstrate that there's a need or that options were considered. So, that's why it's not in the record. I think those comments were made at the Planning Commission level in response to some questions about, can you put, why can't you put it somewhere else? And so, what Jake explained was that in this particular case, the search area, because our radio frequency engineers provide these site acquisition consultants a particular search area and say, this is the area that you have to work with to find a site. It's a four-block area along Portland Avenue. So, it would be somewhere along Portland Avenue. The only reason it's not in the record is because there's no requirement, application requirement, code criteria that we demonstrate, that we went through that process. And it was just a response that Jake made to a question posed at the Planning Commission hearing.
Okay. Question two. It was questioned regarding, there was a question regarding the zoning. I believe I read it was in the C2 location, okay? And it was stated that it's not in a C2, it's in a C5. And there's a question to you, Mike, or Clay, is that correct? Is it in the wrong spot?
Zone designation for the property is C2, community commercial.
Okay. So, it is in the correct zoning location?
Well, the C2 zone allows this type of use, yes, outright.
So, what is the question about R5? Where does that come from?
I think Counselor Musser, Versero, did you say C5 or R5?
Well, it may have been R5.
Okay, I don't know, but if I had to guess, I would say that's, that comes from the assessor's office, has a description of use of property. But the zone is C2, community commercial.
I believe the comment that was made in the testimony tonight was the Cado property adjacent to this is R5.
Right.
But I don't believe that, I don't believe there's anything in our code that says that differentiates if it's abuts R5 zoning or any residential zoning. I don't think I've seen anything in there.
This property does not abut residential zoning. The property adjacent to the east is also C2.
Okay. Okay. So, one more time, any more questions for this gentleman here?
Nope, I don't think so.
No, go ahead. Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time. Appreciate it.
At this time, does the staff have anything to add or does the staff wish to recap anything?
We have a guy in the back-
Do we want to close the public hearing?
But, but, I have to go through my list.
I don't have anything. Counselor Reisner, did you want me to address the dangling over the street kind of thing?
Well, it's not dangling. I'm just talking about a, you know, can a, a utility company, i.e. PGE, put a, you know, some kind of structure that would be from the right-of-way, let's say, on the east side of Portland Avenue to the right-of-way on the west side over the street?
Very short answer is yes, but there are qualifications and there are design limitations. The PGE has an easement out there that they can use. And the one that you're talking about, the one you mentioned, just right where the freeways and ODOT and everything down in there, yeah, that's doable, yeah. They could just do that, and that's just out in the right-of-way. The question is timely because we've got a private developer wanting to do something similar to that, to go over Portland Avenue. That's a little bit different because it's not an easement situation. There's no legal easement to provide for it as is provided for certain utility companies. In this case, PGE is one. So, PGE could do it, yes. I doubt Verizon could do it, as that unless they did it with PGs, plus.
Right, okay. So, thank you.
Hold on a second.
Thank you.
Was that it?
Yes, that is. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I just have one question, Clay. And I don't know because I didn't, I can't wrestle with the codes, but is Verizon required by our code to explore all the options and report on them?
The city attorney is probably best to answer that.
So, when they pick a spot, and then the question is, is the spot they picked, and is the application, does it meet the criteria for that zoning? They're not mandated to search other more scenic areas.
Clay was going to mention about the 120, the 120-day rule? Or do they, am I getting rid of that?
That's coming up. It was, because the first hearing was continued for a month, yeah, we're kind of pushing up against clock, frankly, and if we don't get a decision tonight, we're going to need some kind of waiver. Because the 120-day clock, if I remember right, I've got it in here, but it seems to me it's the 19th, and I think today is the 14th.
So, that'd be Sunday?
Mm-hmm. That's coming right up. And that's your clock for final local decision. You are the final decision makers.
Right, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that information.
All right. Does anybody else from the council have questions regarding the clarification of the testimony to this point? Anybody else have anything? Nobody else have anything? All right, at this time, I'm closing the public testimony portion of this hearing. It's now closed. And we're now going to go into deliberation. Are there any further questions of the staff from the council? Anything else you need to ask the staff?
Couple of maybe clarifying questions.
Okay.
And this is probably for legal. With this being a de novo hearing, is it appropriate to discuss editing conditions of approval that the Planning Commission has put out? Do we need to start over and come up with our own approval criteria?
You've already, you've added, used the word, I think, earlier, mature vegetative screening, which, I just wanted to caution that when we use terms like mature, significant, excessive, these are hard to quantify. The conditions that the Planning Commission, you're free, it is de novo, so you're free to add new conditions to accept those. My understanding is those conditions were imposed after much testimony at those two hearings, but if you had another one or wanted to tinker with that, you could. Again, let's just, we just need to be cautious of using adjectives. Mature is good.
Do you have a better?
I'd like to just say, five gallon is the minimum size, five gallon plant, instead of the one gallon or the three gallon ones.
That's nothing to me.
Well, I mean, bigger than a three. You understand what I'm saying? They come in containers.
Is there a-
You can use the word mature.
Three gallon container, five gallon container, ten gallon container, I mean.
Just know that down the road, depending on what's put in, you may have another issue to deal with.
I believe they kind of agreed and we have an understanding of what we want, is just how would we word that? I'd like to see something that we don't end up with, which there's nothing in the conditions now that they don't go down and plant seeds, you know? And then it's ten years before they grow up. So, if you have a word that you would prefer us use to get to that point, I wouldn't have an issue with that. The other, I have two other things that I'd maybe think about editing, and this is for discussion, beans we know that we can now. On item number four, it says, if technology is feasible, replace proposed diesel generator with electric backup power. I think we could probably edit that and remove if feasible and any mention of generator. They've pretty much said that they've already decided to do that, so we just make it a condition of approval that they use electric battery backup power. The other condition, it sounds like there was some concern about a tree, which I've heard, I've seen numerous times throughout here, that this is a big tree and this is going to help hide the tower. So, maybe add a condition seven to ensure that that tree does stay in place and is continually So, it is a, it's part of the shrouding or the vegetation for the pole to blend into?
I understand your concern there, Counselor. I don't know who has control over that tree. I don't know that we can put a condition on Verizon to keep a tree if Verizon doesn't control that tree. That would be my concern from a legal standpoint. I don't know enough about this tree that I've heard tonight to know.
And to his point, I mean, they've already said that PGE is going to control probably the removal and placement of the pole.
No, this is a tree.
I know, but the thought the tree would come down is when you're messing with the pole and you're going to cut it down so it's easier to put the pole in the ground. So-
I don't think that we can expect them to maintain the tree forever like we are the powwow tree. We spent years and years on that one. Eventually, they have to go, and eventually that one will too. Can I ask a question? Counselor Sickman, sorry. Is this tree on private property or is it a street tree?
I believe it's on private property.
It's on- And it's on the property that is going to contain the ancillary equipment?
Yes.
And yes, you can put a condition on there that it stay, as far as I'm concerned.
Even though it's not the section that's being leased?
It is part of the property that's under consideration for this proposal. What's that? John Hendrickson, he owns the parents right here. Hendrickson's piece. I have some comments.
Yes, sir. Okay. Those were the only things I've asked that the council considers.
For the aid of our guest here tonight, Mr. Alba, the municipal code is the law, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then there's Oregon statutes above that, then there's federal statutes above that. And we are required to follow the law. I mean, as city councilors, we can't just make it up as we go along. Federal law, state law, municipal code, that's law, we got to follow.
Correct.
Now, we could change some of the municipal code, but it wouldn't apply to this applicant because it would be, the changes, any changes would be after this was done. So, within that framework, especially looking at the federal law and the Telecommunications Act, is there anything that the City Council of Gladstone, Oregon can do to stop a cellphone tower from going up in this instance?
If it meets the criteria for the local code, then you must approve it.
No, so we don't really have a choice.
And keep in mind, and I don't know how much this was discussed earlier or if it's in the report, but the Telecommunications Act encourages wireless towers. But Congress has made a policy decision, they want the United States to be, have more wireless capacity. And so, these kinds of things, especially co-locations in which you're not building a new tower, you're adding an antenna to an existing pole, are strongly encouraged by Congress, and that's in the Telecommunications Act, which kind of ties the, even if you wanted to make all the changes in the world, Commissioner, I mean Counselor, you're going to be stuck with certain federal guidelines that you're not going to be able to change.
Okay, so following that question, if we decide to disobey that law and say no, turn the applicant down tonight, it will go to Luba.
Correct.
Land Use Board of Appeals.
I suspect.
Where it will fail because it'll be back into that same pool, Luba will look at it and go, you know, the law says, you know, we can't override the law. But that will be, a Luba appeal will be at some expense to the City of Gladstone, right? But that will be, a Luba appeal will be at some expense to the city of Gladstone, right?
If the city wanted to continue to fight that.
It's a hypothetical. It's a hypothetical. So, I mean, it would cost the city some money to do the Luba appeal.
It could.
Yeah, okay.
But in any event, provided that the application meets the criteria.
Right.
The city council is obligated to approve it if it meets the criteria.
Right, okay, okay. All right. So, I just, I wanted to be clear because I know there's some opposition, and, you know, folks, our hands are often tied in this, so there's no more comments. This is our deliberation. And there just isn't much we can do here. There's not much there there. And so, you need to understand that. I understand it's not happy, but that's sometimes the way it is. I have two technical comments that I'd like to share. One is, radio boosters will not work because radio is bidirectional. So, a cellphone that you have would also have to be boosted. You'd have to have more equipment on it to make that go. The second comment I would make is, there's lots of discussion, I read through the planning commission packet, there was lots of discussion about generator, generator noise, generator smoke, having diesel on site, you know, all kinds of really good questions that were asked and concerns, and they don't appear to be an issue anymore. I mean, we're going to have batteries, it's not going to be a diesel generator. And I think that also sets a positive precedent that hopefully, the planning commission, as it goes through and looks at our municipal code in these regards, can possibly use that for the future. Because the future's coming. This won't be just Verizon. Hypothetically, next week, AT&amp;T will be here up. Hypothetically, Sprint will be here the week after that. And I'll tell you, just by that and that precedent, if we can follow through, if there were diesel generators backing this up every time the power go off, it'd sound like a truck stop out here. So, I think that's a very positive, positive thing. So, those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Nathan Lynn, Tom, got anything?
I got one question for Mr. Connors. Is that appropriate?
No. We're already, just, we're in deliberations, Tom, so just, that's where we're at.
I just have one comment. I think the mature plants is already taken care of here. It does say in here, planting plan to be appropriate for the purpose and as approved by planning staff. So, it's going to go to the planning staff, so it won't be seeds. They're not going to approve seeds. So, I think the mature is not necessary. As far as the tree, I don't think we need to put something in for that tree. I think that's, so many things can happen to a 60, 70-foot tree that's that old.
Everybody got, we're all done here? So, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion concerning this matter. The options are to approve the application as presented by staff. The second option is to approve the application with the conditions or condition, outlining in nature the conditions that we talked about, one being the generator, backup power, battery And if we wish, we can have the staff come back to the council with written decision including those additional conditions, or we can deny the application. Those are our three options. So, I need a motion for one of the three. I would entertain a motion.
So, moved on the first one. Are you going to do three different motions or?
No, no, no.
Which one of the three?
Which one of the three? There's one, the first one is just to approve as is. The second one is to approve it with, the one condition I think that we agree on is the backup, the electric backup generator opposed to diesel.
Well, I feel one way, Pat feels the other way. I don't know.
I'm asking about the battery one, just specifically.
Okay, yeah, that one I think we can.
So, that's one that we want to add to the condition. So, what's the other one? You want to talk about the tree?
Just the tree and whether we should have mature plants, and as long as planning staff understands we're looking for mature plants in the landscaping plan, I'm perfectly happy with the wording of this.
Okay, so we're down to the, does anyone have any issues with the planting right now? Can we just strike that from one?
Strike it.
I mean, they know what we want, and so now, what about the third one, the tree? Any discussion about the tree?
I'd say, strike it.
There's nothing we want to add to it? I mean, I don't, I don't know how we can hold them to it. I mean, again, they're not, I don't think they're the ones responsible for taking out the old one, putting a new one in. But, that's just me.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Wait, hold on a second. Steve, you got anything to add? We still got the backup power in there, so if that's it.
Backup power stays.
Yeah, that's good. How about you, Neil?
I don't like it, but that, you know.
The backup power?
No, I'm voting no. So, you can put in whatever you want. Being that, he said in four mu, four.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay. He said in four blocks, the high school's within four blocks. So, I don't think they did enough research in finding a spot. And I disagree with them as a teacher as to putting it at a high school. Some schools have had parents that have had an uproar. I know there's been talk in Gladstone, you know, needing money to replace the football field at least, and getting a cell tower on some of the school property would help pay for that. So, Mr. Connor, I think, is misinformed in that regard, so I'm voting no on it.
Okay, but we're not there yet.
Right, well, I know, but you're asking for my input, so input from you.
No, I was asking about input on the condition.
I know, well, it's no one doing any good because I'm voting no.
I make a motion that we approve, approve good application. With the condition added of the backup battery power as opposed to diesel power. Right. So, that's what, we got a motion on that from Counselor Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, now, we need to do a discussion? Any more discussion?
Or clarification? A affirmative vote is a denial of the appeal, correct?
Right.
Because this is an appeal.
This is a de novo hearing, though, so you're moving, the motion is to approve the application. A yes, a yes vote.
I wanted clarification, so everybody knows.
Yes vote approves and no vote disapproves.
Approves the application.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we had a motion, we, and no more discussion. It was seconded by Counselor McMahon, and so now, we're going to roll call vote, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Yes.
Counselor Mursrow?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Sickman?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Mayor Jacob Ellis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Motion carries. I think, ladies and gentlemen, we got business, that's it for the regular agenda, now we're going to business.
Well, you're right. I was just a business.
Business from the council.
Okay, I'll start off tonight. We've got some bad news. Probably less than a week ago, a lady that has come before us at the podium for several years, sometimes we didn't like having her up there because she had an agenda that didn't agree with ours, but she had a kind heart and was a longtime residence here. Rose Johnson passed away in December.
Oh, no.
And we just found out about it. I mean, we were a little bit late, but we found out about it last week. So, yeah, she passed away from brain hemorrhage, so.
Tom?
I got a few things. One, I would just like to make a note that I would like the council to have further discussion with Verizon regarding the input of how the tower is put in, when it's put in, and so on. One of the issues is that we are going through several changes at this point, okay? From putting in all new pipes to putting in all new streets, okay? To possibly redoing the main street of Portland Avenue. And where the location of that pole is, could fit in better, possibly a few feet one place or another, or if new buildings are put in or whatever, there may be different conditions that that pole could be put in that would fit in better. And I would just like to hold it open for communication that Verizon would be willing, I'd like them to be willing, to work with the city, to become partners in the input of that tower. So, that's under consideration. I appreciate that. Something, a happy note, it's Lynn's birthday today. And his mathematics are a different mine, but for some reason, his birthday is, he's 47 tonight.
Oh, I thought that'd be a good idea. Just reverse it, instead of 74, 47.
Another item, Kim and I were asked to go to a convention Atlanta that I learned more acronyms that I can't possibly remember. And I was in about at least 20 meetings, lectures, about how you can do everything in the world and you steal every idea you can get. You know, it may cost millions, you know, you may buy skyscrapers or whatever, but it was very informative. And one of the things I heard that I often, I believe in, but they kept substantiating, is to make something happen, okay? If we would like to make Gladstone grow or look better or whatever, that action really needs to come from the people that live in Gladstone and agree with what they want. And something I feel we haven't really done in the three years I've been involved is to really ask people what they want, to help pinpoint it. And I believe we need to start that communication real soon. A town hall may be appropriate in the near future. Maybe the advisory committee that's currently working on our mission to put up a city hall on a police station somehow in conjunction with the library. Maybe the advisory committee has new tasks afterward. And/or, we select people that would in fact help make that decision of what the Gladstone citizens really want. If they want it the way it is, then so be it. If they want skyscrapers, that's another option. But we really need to know what people want, so they want tax support, whatever we end up proposing. The last but not least is I was involved in a council, a coffee for the council meeting on the, just yesterday in fact. There were six people there. They were very appreciative of the councilors there and were very positive. They were, they asked a couple of questions regarding the status on things and seemed to, would appreciate keeping the, keep getting a status of what's going on. And they were great to talk to. That's all I got.
I would add, I was also at that coffee, the council meeting, one of the questions that came up, Mr. Boyce and Mr. Tabor, that probably cannot be answered tonight, but if we could think about it, is what is the status of our street maintenance program? Maybe we could get a better answer to folks as streets crack and need to be resealed and whatnot. He's laughing in the back, I can see. If we could be thinking about that, I'd like to get an answer out at some point in the future. I'd like to make the council aware of something that we've talked about kind of before, we've heard a little bit about from our friends in Oregon City, and that is the Tri-City CCSD sewer plant. General overview, I'd like to say that I've come to understand that this is a big deal. This is a big issue. We need to be aware of this. There are dollars here, there are tax effects to our citizens. We really need to pay attention to this. I am the representative to the, what am I, the representative to the?
National Public Works.
It has a long title, yeah. And they meet every two months, they're about to meet again in May. Their last meeting, it was, it appears that they're going to make a decision or try to make a decision in November of this year. There is talk about new sewer plant, just put a lot of zeros after the dollar sign. I mean, it's a lot of money there. We need to discuss this further. One of the things I would like to ask from the council is to get some direction as to what the council would like to see us do there and to help the council better understand the issues. And so, I've already asked Mr. Boyce to put this on a work session as soon as possible, like everything else in the world. I just want to make the council aware that I think that's an issue, we should be concerned about it. I would also like to say a few words about Rose Johnson. Those of us who share a last name with Rose affectionately nicknamed her sister Rose. I always liked that. And there were times that I would cringe when she'd walk up to the podium. I have found, especially through the work at the library advisory committee some time ago where I sat next to her, something I already knew, and that is that she's a very sharp lady. She really was smart and she cared about the community.
Kind heart.
She had a kind heart. She got flustered sometimes when she'd speak in public, but who doesn't? And, you know, I came to realize late that she meant well and she will be missed. And a very, a much happier thing, happy birthday, Lynn.
Thank you.
For sure. So, being budget season, I was curious, Peter, plan on taking any extended time off between now and end of July? Because this is a busy time.
Well, I'd rather not talk about.
Oh, okay.
The time I'm going to be away, I'm going to talk about reported public meetings.
Okay. So, well, how about, ask about the meetings for Parks Board and Public Traffic Safety Committee for this, when's those next meetings?
So, I'm hoping to hit Traffic Safety at the fourth Monday of this month. So, I believe it's the 27th. Is it the 27th?
The 27th. So, that was the Parks?
Meeting on the 21st.
Traffic Safety.
Oh, Traffic Safety?
And I want to start staggering the park and rec and the traffic safety meetings because they're both, they both identify the same night to meet. So, next month in May, on the fourth Monday, I'd like to have the park and recreation meeting.
You might want to get the word out because at our last traffic safety, they said the 20th.
Okay.
So, that was, because that's what I have on my calendar. That's why I was following up with you.
Gotcha.
And then also, following up with what Tom had talked about, about comments, his comment about information, in the past, in the newsletter, there used to be little, maybe just one or two sentences about what the planning commission, what was coming up or what decisions they had made and also what city council has done. And that hasn't happened in several years, and I thought maybe that would be a good conduit for getting information out to the public as to what's happening with the city.
Great.
So, and Lynn, happy birthday. Maybe you have many more.
Thank you. I hope so too, but I don't know.
Mr. McMahon?
Yes.
Mr. Sickman? Well, I'm going to put Lynn on the top of my list after her birthday last.
Thanks, Jim.
I got a couple of things. One, the city hall police station committee had one person resign, so I just didn't know if the council, we had said nine, are we happy with the eight that are still there? Do we want to take them? We chose them. Chronologically, I believe by the dates they applied, there was two other applicants. Do we want to move down through the list? Do we want to leave it alone? I just kind of wanted to bring that to the attention.
May, may I? The committee did have a discussion about that. I did make a call to the next person on the list who indicated she was not, she was no longer interested in serving on the committee. I did not remember about the application we received late.
I did not remember about the application we received late. The group itself was afraid that if we went through and advertised again, by the time we got the person on the committee, the committee would be ending its work. I think they would be open to the application we received late. I could go to that person and ask if they are still interested.
Well, I don't know what the council feels on it. That was kind of just the question that...
I just wanted to make you aware of the discussion.
Yeah, and I don't want to, I don't want to bring somebody in halfway into the game. But I thought, it was mentioned to me by a committee member, that they had lost somebody, and what, does the commission specifically said nine? Do we want to hold that number, or do we want to continue with what they have now?
I think, sorry to interrupt, I think that the committee was happy with where they were at, Bob, Linda, Natalie, I seen nods.
We're moving along.
Yeah. Yep.
We've already had four, or meaning the next Monday will be our...
And if it's gelling really well for you now, bring another person in, it may not work that well. So, you're...
We're on such a limited timeframe.
Yeah, you may be better off the way it is now, yeah, working with what you've got. Okay. For the purpose of recording in minutes, there were several police station, city hall, library, committee members in the audience, that said they would like to stand with the committee they have now. Is that okay, Jolene?
Yes, that is.
I also went to Atlanta with Tom, and it was, it was rigorous, meeting after meeting, but it was really good. I come back with lots of ideas, probably way more than I'm capable of keeping in my head. I got a lot of notes to go back through. And one of the things, one of the classes, one of the seminars that I went to, had to do with branding. Branding your neighborhood, branding your town. And it kind of comes back to what Tom was talking about earlier, is figuring out how, what brand you want. And that's going to come right straight from the community, based on these processes. So, that's probably one of the first ones that I'm going to bring forward. It's a very, it's a multi-step process, but I'm going to bring it to the council, have them look at it, see what they think, because I think it would be a good process. I think the branding part is kind of like Little Town of Willamette up there. That's all, the whole thing has been branded one. So, the only other thing I wanted to bring up, and I did have a little discussion with Commissioner McMahon earlier today about this.
Counselor.
Counselor McMahon, I'm sorry. Is, does the city have any concerns, and this isn't for debate, it's just something to bring up. We're hearing lots of issues of wildfires, forest fires for this coming year. It's been a very mild winter, things are already growing like crazy. Have we given any consideration to any of our vacant lands that we have within the town, and what we're going to do to mitigate, to maybe see that we don't have some big fires here in town? So, it's just something I wanted to bring up, if somebody hadn't already thought about it, or if we don't have an issue with it. I'm thinking that, like on some of your grass areas, large areas...
Oh, on some of your grass areas, there is a restriction, a heights restriction. I'm thinking, we'd have to talk to code enforcement about that, but I know a lot of communities do have that restriction, so we'd have to get a...
What I was actually thinking about is, I know a couple of years ago, we had quite a problem up on the Oberson property with fires.
Yeah.
Because it had gotten pretty overgrown, it was a real dry year, and so, just looking for any mitigation, and that's just one that, if we have others that need to be looked at, and that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the only thing I have is, I want to thank everybody again, and I'm working on a letter of interest for a grant from Metro for a planning, a planning grant is what they call it. That will involve, if we get it, it'll involve a ton of public input, is built into the package. So, this goes back to Tom and Kim's point, and we talked about this, the town hall meeting. Originally, when we got sworn in, we talked about doing a town hall meeting sometime in February, Marchish. To be honest with you, we're barely treading water. We are taking on so much, folks, that, that's why the timeline's gone back. We're going to try to get the town hall done, hopefully sometime in June, it'll give us time to really advertise it. Like I said, we don't want to have a town hall meeting and have, you know, 22 people show up. So, it's kind of a deal. It will cover, be more of a state of the cities, basically where we're at, and I'll just close with this. You guys need to understand that this council has absolutely positively stepped up to the plate. There is an enormous amount of energy and time that they are putting into it. I know some of you people have already said you appreciated it. When you're out and about, we appreciate the input, we're just like you, we live here, we've seen it, we'll try to make it better. But these guys have, individually, every one of them are attending meetings at night that you can't even begin to count. Writing proposals, writing policy, writing staff, stuff to help the staff. Staff has been, conversely, staff is now saddled with more stuff, because we're doing more stuff. So, when you're out and about and you see these guys, give them a thumbs up. I'm telling you, man, they are stepping up to the plate. It's awesome to be part of. So, with that, that's all I have. Thank you for coming. This meeting is adjourned at 9:08.